She said.
No, that's not.
I have to take that.
Yeah, this was empty.
Next Thursday, I'm getting started back.
Yeah, me too. I just had.
I usually don't say any words.
All right.
I know. He has it scheduled when I find the place in the backyard. He got some of them last.
All right, we have the high sign to get started. So, good evening and welcome to the February 24th City of Xenia City Council meeting. At this time, we will have an invocation led by Senior Pastor Todd Martin of Liberty Worship Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Levi Dean. If everyone would please rise.
Let's bow our heads. Father, we just come to you tonight and we, there's a lot going on in our world. And, Lord, we just pray over those that are in harms way tonight. And, Lord, we pray over our city. And, Lord, I want to pray specifically, Lord, that you would just give wisdom and revelation to our council tonight. Lord, protect our citizens here in Xenia and everyone that is maybe feeling a little bit deserted tonight. That's what I have on my heart, Lord. And I pray, God, that you would just touch our city and this council in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Todd Martin. Thank you, Councilman Levi Dean. This time, I'll call the meeting to order. We will go on to roll call at this time. Thank you.
Vice President Herschel?
Here.
Councilman Scrivens?
Here.
Councilwoman Dean?
Here.
Councilman Branham?
Here.
Councilman Dean?
Here.
Mayor Mayes?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. First is the February 10th, 2022 regular meeting. Minutes are before us. Do I have a motion to entertain the minutes? End to record, please.
Submit.
Moved by Mayor Mayes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dean. Thank you. Any additions, corrections on the minutes? All right, seeing on roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the February 12th, 2022 special meeting. Those minutes are brought before us. I want to thank the city clerk for concising everything down to eight pages of about seven hours of discussion. So, thank you very much. At this time, I'll take a motion to accept the minutes, please. Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Vice President. Any additions or corrections?
Right to the time.
Just the correction of the time at the top. Thank you. All right, other than that, roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Upstanding.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We have no special presentation scheduled for tonight. This time, our agenda is opportunity for audience comments. If anyone in the audience tonight would care to come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record, let me your comments, three to four minutes, please. All right, no one in the audience at this time. City clerk, do we have any emails brought to our attention? Yeah, thank you. First item on old business is Resolution 2022-H, which is the second reading. This is authorizing the sale of real property at 194 East Church Street, formerly known as the Carnegie Library, to O'Neill's Catering LLC in repealing Resolution 2021-W introduced by Councilwoman Dean at our last meeting.
I'd like to move for passage, please.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by the mayor. Open the floor for discussions or comments.
I would just like to say I'm very excited about this project. I love second that, too. I love food and business.
Very exciting. We have someone in the audience tonight representing that. So, thank you very much. Any other comments, words of encouragement at this time, other than to thank the city for expediting the process? Thank you very much. Very excited to always see new business in our community and business expand in our community as well. So, at this time, we'll open up for roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is Resolution 2022-I, listed as the second reading. This is awarding the bid and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Barrett Peeding for the Belbrook Avenue project from Peace Pipe Trail to Allison Avenue. And this was introduced by Councilwoman Dean at our last meeting on February 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move for passage.
Thank you. Move for passage by Councilwoman Dean. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Thank you. Any questions, discussion regarding this project? Other than thank you again, city staff? Be glad to see this happen. I think at the last meeting, you discussed this would happen in June or July?
That's the completion date.
Yeah, very good. All right. Seeing no other discussion, can I get a roll call, please?
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is new business ordinance 2022-04, titled "An Emergency and a Public Hearing." This is amending sections 122001, 122010, 122011, 122606, 124402, repealing sections 122010 of the City of Xenia's Land Development Code and adopting the revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps, which will be effective March 8th of 2022, and declaring emergency. I'm going to turn this over to Madam Law Director.
In September of last year, we were notified by FEMA that they were updating the city's flood insurance maps. FEMA oversees the National Flood Insurance Program. They update those maps about every 10 years. To be compliant, you have to, as a community, have adopted the latest ODNR, the Ohio Department of Natural Resources model, as far as floodplain regulation. Public Service did send those back in 2021. We had a little trouble getting an answer out of ODNR. This is not the type of ordinance we would typically present as an emergency. However, because of the lateness of ODNR's review, we really didn't have a choice. We need to have this ordinance effective before March 8th. If it's not, then those members of our community that need national flood insurance aren't eligible for it until these regulations go in place. So, that's the reason we had to present it tonight as an emergency. The changes that were made to the land development code basically were just to update our floodplain regs to match the ODNR 2019 model. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from our colleagues at this time?
Just like to thank the law director again for her yeoman's work on getting this done. This wasn't an easy project here. I can see what we used to have and what we have now. We've come a long way once again.
I would just like to thank Chris as well for providing that timeline of events and the email just to kind of give us an idea of why this was coming forward as an emergency. So, appreciate that as well.
At this time, if it's okay, I'll open up with the public hearing and ask those who would like to speak, including our colleagues, who would like to speak in favor of amending these sections, to come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record. Any other comments from council? All right. At this time, if anyone would like to come to the podium and speak against the amending of these sections, please go to the podium at this time, let me your comments, two to three minutes. This time, I'll close the public hearing and invite one of my colleagues to introduce this as, I'm sorry, to amend this as an emergency.
Submit.
Moved by the mayor and seconded by Councilman Scrivens, is that correct? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Seeing no other discussion previous, I'll put move for roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Our next item is an introduction to ordinance 2022-05. This is amending section 26004, titled "Holidays of the City's Administrative Code," as contained in Part 2 of the Xenia City Code. At this time, we'll turn this over to Mr. Holloway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm presenting this on behalf of the Administrative Steering Committee, which is the three appointed officials, as well as the clerk of courts from municipal court. They met on the February 17th and voted to bring this item to you for requested approval. They're requesting to change the holiday section of the city's administration code, adding Juneteenth as a recognized city holiday. This has already been recognized by the federal government, as well as the state and Greene County, so following suit with other levels of government to celebrate the end of slavery. The proposed amendment would go into effect immediately for non-union employees, and then our intent would be to get your authorization to go back and negotiate with the collective bargaining units for recognition of the same holiday. So, staff is seeking an introduction for that this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Holloway at this time?
One question, Mr. President. So, would those negotiations happen before this June with the bargaining units?
That's the intent, yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? This time, I will ask the floor if anyone would care to introduce.
I'll introduce them.
Introduced by Councilman Scrivens, thank you. Next on our agenda is an introduction to Resolution 2022-J. This is amending Appendix 2 of the Employee Benefits Manual, Non-Union Wage Ranges for Year 2022. Mr. Holloway.
Thank you, Mr. President. As councils are aware, we completed negotiations with all seven of the city's bargaining units for three-year adjustments of two and a half, two and a quarter, two and a quarter annually for their increases. And the Administrative Steering Committee also met to discuss what to do with non-union staff after considering the city's financial position and comparison data of other cities in similar positions. They came to the consensus to recommend a council increase of 3% to the pay scale for Year 2022. This is just to change the pay scale. It wouldn't give anyone an automatic increase. Those are all still based on merit and at the suggestion of the supervisor and approved by the appointed official. So, this is just 3% for the pay scale. The committee also suggested a change of adding a lump sum payment option for employees to kind of bring some equity to positions where subordinates are being paid more than their supervisor and also to use in specific cases where the labor market is demanding higher wages. So, in like, you know, civil engineering, construction inspection places where the market is in high demand and we can't find people within our wage ranges. So, that would just be a $5,000 lump sum at the discretion of the appointed official as needed. So, those were the two changes they're looking to make and seeking an introduction for this resolution this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Holloway at this time?
Sure, Mr. President, couple of questions. So, Jared, the lump sum, would that raise the baseline wage on a, in the future basis or is that a one-time?
No, that's a one-time.
Okay. And that, is that seek to be above the maximum of the pay grade then?
Yes.
Okay. And then, my other question is, I understand raising the maximum rates to give you guys flexibility and to be able to, you know, award, you know, effort. But I guess what I don't understand is why, why the necessity of raising the minimum? And you're not required to hire at the minimum, right? That can be negotiated at the initial hiring as well, too. But my only concern is, once you've raised that minimum, there's no going back unless we come back and change this at that point. So, I don't see a downside to leaving the minimum where it's at. And I understand raising the maximum, obviously, that would be a re-computation of the midpoint here as well with that. But do you guys perceive any downside of just raising the maximum and leaving the minimum where it's at?
Yes, so I think the concern would be, over time, your, all of your pay ranges are going to start overlapping if you only increase the top end and not the bottom. And so, you could come into such situations where, you know, you want to bring somebody in, but you, you know, you don't have room to put them so that, you know, their subordinates would be getting paid higher than, and their supervisor would be getting paid lower just because the ranges are that way. So, I get what you're saying. I think overall, the compensation study, you know, was put together in 2008. We've made modifications to it since then, and we've talked, or the Administrative Steering Committee, which I sit in on, I'm not a member of, but has talked about updating that and looking at other models, just because it's hard when you have a set range and the market changes and, you know, all these factors change, and then you have, you know, employees who are in bargaining units and their wages are set by negotiation. So, factoring in all those factors, our model isn't ideal, but it's what we're working with today.
Sure. So, I, I'm, I'll get offline with you and talk about that. I still don't see that leaving the minimum where it's at and raising the maximum would cause that problem, but let's get offline and I'd like to understand that.
If I could weigh in on that just real quick, I guess from my perspective, I think that minimum is trying to place the value on that particular position at a certain rate, right? And if you're not adjusting those minimums, if you're just leaving it the same in perpetuity, my suggestion would be not to have a minimum. You just go zero to whatever the top is, because if, sure, if you're not willing to adjust the minimum, then it really doesn't mean much, right? So, right now, it's essentially saying, this is kind of what we think is the minimum that this position, you know, the market would dictate, we would pay for this position and then the maximum. But if you're not going to adjust that, and you're just going to say, well, we want to have the ability to pay them less than, you know, a certain amount, then the minimum really doesn't have, it doesn't mean much of anything at that point. And so, my suggestion would be if that's the approach we're going to take, we might want to just do away with a minimum wage altogether, which we also then do away with the midpoint as well.
Correct.
Which is sometimes a tool that we use. In fact, you know, it's, we just made, or are about to make an offer to the IT position that council authorized, and that midpoint is one of the tools that we use in looking at, well, the midpoint of the range is this, and so it's something to go on rather than having this huge range and figuring out, okay, where do we want to begin to make an offer to this employee? So, the bottom of the range and the midpoint of that range is valuable when you're making that initial offer to figure out where do we value this particular position at.
I don't have a problem with you guys keeping on your own books, your own minimums, service ranges. I mean, you don't have to have us to authorize you for that, right? But my concern is, once we raise or we set a minimum point, that's taking that out of the negotiations completely at that point.
Over that, it is something that when we publish a job, the minimum and maximum of the range is on the publishing. So, you know, people will see that number, and if it's a really low number or it hasn't been raised, they might think that that's where they're starting at and not even consider applying. So, it is a visible thing from a recruiting standpoint as well.
Well, and it is a way to track. I mean, remember, these are non-union, so most of these are managerial. These aren't union people, these are the supervisors. So, the minimum gives you a way to, if this is the top step the union members making, if you want to move someone from, say, utility worker to a supervisor, are you maintaining a proper gap between that highest union wage and the lowest minimum for non-union? So, it does aid in that as well.
Are the court's employees all non-union?
They're all non-union.
So, this is all the court employees, too, including non-supervisors?
Yes, under state statute, they are all non-union.
Right. So, we do have a chunk of folks who are non-union, are non-supervisory that are covered by these?
Yeah, your deputy clerks would be.
I get it. I get it. It boils down to money, but it's also retention, or a hiring, yeah, recruitment. Any other discussion interesting? All right, so at this time, who would care to introduce?
I'll introduce him.
All right, introduced by the mayor. Thank you. Next item is an administrative motion awarding, approving the schedule of bills in the amount of $392,000. Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. I have nothing specifically to narrow the bills this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Duke at this time?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just one question. Page nine, about six inches down. Where was the traffic study done?
So, the traffic study is kind of anticipating the road put in for Galloway through the current town square. So, it included all the roads around the town square, factoring in intersections around the town square, the neighborhood, Detroit, Maine, as well as if there was an intersection put through on Galloway.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Duke regarding the schedule of bills tonight? This time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the bills, please.
So, move.
Moved by Councilman Scrivens. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilman Branham. Roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Branham?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mayes?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a official report from our appointed officials. At this time, I will open the floor up to Mr. Duke.
Thank you, Council President. We've begun a transition in our software. In fact, yesterday was the last day where we were operating on our old utility billing software. And across the board, we're changing over a lot of softwares over the next week, HR, payroll, accounts payable, utility billing, asset management, a lot of those modules that the council approved us moving forward with a few months ago. And so, there will be some changes in the way that people are doing things like paying some of their bills online, as well as a little bit of downtime. And so, some of our residents may have noticed that our online bill pay option was taken down earlier this week, and that will stay down until the first of March, and then that will come back up. The new bill pay option will have a lot of options that we didn't have previously, adding different things like Google Pay, Apple Pay, Venmo, a lot of different ways for people to pay their bills, and a lot of technology that I think a lot of our users are going to find really beneficial. There have been some dialogue out on social media about things like costs and fees. There won't be any fees passed along to our utility users who are paying their utility bills via that online tool. We're still determining whether or not there would be any fees for some other things like if someone has an outstanding we violation amount due, things like outstanding property code maintenance bills and things like that. We could potentially have some fees that are associated with that, because the city does incur fees as we collect through that, through that payment method. So, some of that's still to be determined, but the vast majority of online payments that we receive are for utility bills. There certainly won't be a fee that's passed along to our users for that. We encourage our users to pay electronically, digitally. It's the most efficient method for us to process those payments, and so we appreciate people's patience as we move to that new system. And if anybody has any questions, they can certainly reach out to the finance office. The utility billing department will be happy to walk them through that new payment process. So, we appreciate everyone's patience with us in that, in that way. We'll also be rolling out some of the new options and enhanced features to our customers and their ability to view consumption. So, we've been able, in our office for several months now, to view consumption in real time, look at how much, you know, you were using on day X, Y, or Z, or even down to a specific hour. And we'll be rolling some of that functionality out to our residents in the month of March. So, excited about a lot of those new features that we'll be bringing to the public. We will have a little bit of downtime. Our window will actually be closed. We won't be receiving any payments Monday morning as we make that transition. That's actually the day where we're making that hard cutoff from one system to the next. So, we'll have probably four or five hours that morning where we won't be able to take payments at the window, but people will still be able to put payments in Dropbox, pay via PSN, which is another online method. So, there'll still be some options for people to make payment, and it certainly will be up and running before those bills are due on the 4th. So, I know it's kind of a tight window, but.
Yeah, so this won't intersect with a shut-off week of not being able to pay at the window.
We, no, so we actually just completed a shut-off week. And so, we're through that. We do have our normal bills that are due on the 4th. That payment option will be up on the 1st, so we'll have a few days to be able to make that payment. I'm sure we'll be busy trying to help people through those processes, and it's understandable that it's a new, a new payment method and a new process, and so there will be some learning curve for the public, but long-term, I think it'll be a much better option for our community and our residents.
So, we just need to make sure that we know that the system isn't down because of a cyber attack on Defender of the Fatherland Day.
That is true. The system is not down due to any of that, at least not today. That's not the reason that it's down.
That is the largest holiday, or the Russian celebration, which occurred yesterday, so. Coincided with another event that happened in Europe. Yeah, so, go ahead.
Fortunately, that's not the reason that we are down, yes.
Right.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Duke? Thank you. Thank you for that report. Ms. Fisher.
I just wanted to touch base with council. I emailed you all last Tuesday. I had been contacted by the Board of Elections. The ballot language, as we had proposed it in our ordinance, was not approved by them or the Secretary of State, basically based on length. I appreciate the fact that they gave us the chance to rewrite it, as we know what amendments we're proposing better than any. Basically, when we were given half of a ballot, half the sheet, I sent you the language. I also sent that to the Board of Elections Director the same day. I have not heard yet whether or not that's been approved. Part of the reason I had to email you, I asked when I met with her last Wednesday if there was enough time to wait till council meeting this evening for you to review it. I was told no. It had to, it had to get up to the Secretary of State by Friday. So, when I hear if the Secretary of State has approved that ballot language or not, I will let you know.
Did they give you specifics other than the, it was lengthy?
It was too long.
Okay.
It was basically too long. So, they did give us a whole column on the half, a half a ballot. And then, what they're required to do under the Secretary of State's manual, and this was the Exhibit A that you passed with that ordinance, at each polling place, there will be an actual copy showing every exact change, additions, deletions, that we are proposing to make. So, I sent them that as well, again, in words, so they would have that to print out, but that will be posted at each polling location.
So, when will we know?
Once we have the lines drawn.
So, is there enough time to make an additional correction?
I don't think there will be any additional corrections. just to have them go over it as well, catch any typos. So I will get ahold of her this morning. I would think they would have heard by the Secretary of State by now if that was approved or not, so.
Any questions?
I don't, I'm not sure how we could shorten it anymore.
Any questions for our law director tonight, regarding either this or any other issues? No? All right. Anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Next is Mr. Holloway, sitting in for Mr. Mayorman tonight, thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to let the public know, council's already aware that the city does have another surplus option ongoing currently. So if you're looking for some bikes or random things, there's a lot of stuff on there. We'll have links on our website and Facebook and elsewhere. I will get with several council members in the near future about standing committees. We'll have lots of meetings probably in the next month. I think almost all of them are probably due to meet, following the council retreat and some action items there, so stay tuned for that. And then I would just encourage everyone to stay safe this evening. It looks like we may get some freezing rain overnight, so drive slow, stay safe.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Holloway tonight? All right. You got your off the hook, thank you very much. Next is reports of boards, commissions, and committees. And first up is Planning and Zoning Commission, which met on February 17. This meeting was rescheduled from February 3 due to the weather. Planning and zoning, welcome new member Mary Haller and elected Faith Saris to serve as the vice chair for 2022. The following cases were Case PZC 2021, which is a zoning, excuse me, a zoning text amendment to land development code to update the city of Xenia's floodplain development, which we voted on tonight. That was recommended and endorsed by Planning and Zoning. Next item was Case PZC 2022-02, which was an alternative equivalent review to modify climate-controlled storage unit that was not originally built to plan. This alternative equivalent review was approved and passed. And then the last was Case PZC 2022-03, which was a Xenia Town Square redevelopment plan that was endorsed by Planning and Zoning to present to city council, which leads into the fact that we will have a council workshop scheduled for Tuesday, March 1 at 7:00 PM. That will be a presentation by Larry Dillon, by the Dillon Court, regarding Xenia Town Square. Public is welcome to attend. I will remind the public, though, that there is not an opportunity for audience comments at our workshop. However, your presence is welcome. Anyone have anything for Planning and Zoning?
You said 2:00 PM on the first?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM, okay.
Yeah. That will follow immediately after Braca. So we have two meetings back-to-back. So sit in on Braca at 6:00 and stay for the fun at 7:00, right?
Yes.
All right. So anyone else have any reports for commissions or committees that they would like to bring to our attention tonight? No? Okay. Next is opportunity for council comments. We'll start first with, to my left, with Councilwoman Dean.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm praying for what's happening in Ukraine. It's really sad to see, 100% preventable, unfortunately. So that's all.
All right, thank you. Councilman Scrivens?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no prepared texts tonight, but, you know, I don't like to speak too much beyond my pay grade, but, you know, not only is there fighting in Ukraine, there's fighting in Yemen, there's fighting around the world, Myanmar, you name it, there's fighting. So the question is, what are we going to do about it? What's our stance? And how are we going to defend freedom? Now, freedom ain't free, last I checked. So, so I have to say to the head, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Scrivens. Councilman Brannan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations to Rowdy Rick Templeton on his retirement out of public service last Friday. So congratulations to him, and good luck on his future endeavors.
All right, thank you, Councilman Brannan. Councilman Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have anything else to add.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Mays?
Just a couple of things from this last few weeks. I had an opportunity to meet with the executive director of the Ohio Municipal League in Kent Scott, and had a really good conversation about some different ways we can be involved with the OML, and talked about some of the things that are at hospitals right now that are out there and some concerns that we have. So it was a good conversation, and we really appreciated him coming to Xenia. Also had a chance to meet with Rick Paralas this week, and just continued to build a relationship with the county, work on a couple of things that we've talked about in work sessions and just put some feelers out. It was a good conversation and really happy about it. On the 23rd, just yesterday, had a chance to meet with Senator Dillon, and he was the chair of the Finance Committee, and had, was able to talk about some of those very things that Kent and I talked about from the OML and some concerns that we have about some hospitals. So it was a very good conversation, and was really happy with, I think that he very much understands our local government and things, some things that need to not happen in the state, so it's very good. I wanted to thank our staff and just mention our work session on the 12th, and I know that Michelle, our city clerk, and a few others put a lot of effort into that, and really appreciate staff spending time with us and being there and giving us really an entire day to hash out a lot of subjects, a lot of information. And so just very appreciative to our staff. Today, I, they were the fire just down the street from me today. Couple houses down, and multiple people and friends reaching out, making sure we were all okay. So just want to appreciate our fire department. Everyone was safe and there was nobody there, but not just our fire department, Xenia Township, Cedarville, Diva Creek, they were all there very quickly. And I appreciate the work that they do in stepping into danger very quickly. And I appreciate the way that they are mindful of the community, you know. Of course, all the neighbors come out, we got to see what's going on. And everybody's just very, our fire department engages well with our community, and I really appreciate that. And last, just on a personal note, my mom always watches. She's turning 75 in a few days, so very happy birthday, Mom. Love you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Mays. At this time, Vice President Herschel?
Sure, I had an opportunity with Representative Fairborn. Counsel, to have a couple of meetings regarding funding for the, our municipal court. And we also had an opportunity to meet with Stephen Holland, who's the Montgomery County Common Police Court and municipal court administrator. And so we want to get an insight in terms of how their courts were structured and how their funding process works there, and that was really helpful. It turns out that Mr. Holland had also previously served as the court administrator for the Ohio Supreme Court. So he gave us some good insight in terms of how proposed changes to the structure of the court here in Greene County might be received by the Ohio Supreme Court as well, too. Once again, this is a, a reason we're pursuing this is because we're underwriting the Xenia Municipal Court from the city of Xenia on the order of about $600,000 a year. And the folks in Fairborn are very interested because they're underwriting the Fairborn Municipal Court on the order of about $1.2 million a year. And with the population trends and the townships and the other villages, that those, both of those numbers, and especially for Fairborn in terms of the population trends on the eastern side of the county, those numbers are only going to be going up in terms of our two municipalities. So didn't necessarily come to any conclusions at those meetings, but he gave us some recommendations of some things that we should be pursuing. And I think our next step is, we're planning on having a meeting with the two city managers in March. And then it might be good for us to have, include the law directors in that as well, too. So they're getting that set up on the Fairborn side. But I just want to let you guys know that that will be coming. But anyways, I really appreciate the folks from Fairborn stepping out and working hard on this as well, too. So just more to come on that topic.
That's all, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much. So I'll wrap up with thanking everyone for watching tonight. I'll keep things really brief, because we have some bad weather coming in. Just to, you know, remind people, it doesn't cost anything to smile. Kindness is free. Pass it on, open the door for somebody, show a little love once in a while. I'd like to thank my colleagues for the time that they commit with council. We've had a long meeting a week ago last Saturday. We have plenty of meetings coming up, so thank you again for the commitment to CIRP. And at this time, if no one has anything else, Mr. Berger, did we get through what you needed tonight? Thank you. All right. And city clerk, we got through all the items, is that correct? Okay. At this time, I will, we have no work session scheduled for tonight, nor an executive session. So at this time, I will move for a motion to adjourn.
Sumo.
Moved by Councilwoman Dean. Seconded by? I'll second it. Seconded by Councilman Brannan. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Vice President Herschel?
Aye.
Councilman Scrivens?
Aye.
Councilwoman Dean?
Aye.
Councilman Brannan?
Aye.
Councilman Dean?
Aye.
Mayor Mays?
Aye.
President Smith?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.